Welcome to the June meeting of the Monterey Public Library Board of Library Trustees. Um, we can start with a little call. Welcome to the June meeting of the Monterey Public Library.
President.
Trustee Petty.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
And Trustee Moro.
Here. Okay, we've now ascertained that we're all here. All right, so um, we will move on to the consent items on the agenda. Um, the only item is the approval of the minutes. Um, we, do we need public comment on the approval of the minutes? Yeah, I guess we did.
Not so much on the approval, but just if there were public comments about the minutes, yeah.
Okay, so we'll see public comment on the minutes?
We do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10-second delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone and ensure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting on Zoom, use the link or phone number on the Library Board of Trustees' agenda at researchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1613528864, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a comment on this item, please raise your hand using Zoom, or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine. There are no comments at this time, Chair Moro.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
I'll make the motion. Okay, I'll second it.
Great. Trustee Felger.
Okay, we're ready to go. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Joshi.
Uh, approve.
Trustee Petty.
Yes.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
And Chair Moro.
Yes. Okay, so now we move on to, oh, we, uh, public comments, and since you've already done your spiel, I think we'll just take the time for the public comments.
Exactly. So if there's anyone that would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda, please raise your Zoom hand, or if you are connected by telephone, please dial star nine. And there are no comments.
Okay, so before we move on to public appearance, I just want to make the, the public comment that I will be the only chair ever to have done an entire term without ever meeting you in person. And, and probably, I think it's interesting.
Well, you know how we can fix that problem. It's that four people said no for next year.
Yeah. Um, so our next item on the agenda is to review the council policy on the selection of officers and select chair and vice chair for 2122. Uh, you have the policy in your packet, so I don't, I don't know if there are any questions on the policy, and if not, I think we can just move forward. And the first thing I, I, we will do is, um, is ask, um, in order of service, someone to be the chair for next year. And, um, so the, the order, which is at the bottom of page 10, is, um, the person who's been here the longest who hasn't been the chair is Jim. So Jim, will you honor us with being the chair?
Don't know if I'll honor you, but I'll be glad to be the chair.
Thank you. She breathes a sigh of relief. Uh, okay, now we move on to the vice chair selection, and the person who has been here longest and has been vice chair is Harish, so you can accept her decline.
I'm honored to be asked, but it's too premature, so I'll take a in check. Someone will.
Thank you. Um, then we move on to trustee Felger.
I'm even newer than Harish. If you think it's something that I could pick up in the next year under Jim's tutelage, I'll be happy to accept.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
And just, just a quick comment, there is in the policy that you should be at least six months to be the chair, and you've been on the board much longer than six months, and this is for the vice chair. So I think you're very well qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Another, another point that I'd like to make is, is when a person takes a pass, they don't lose their place in line. So there'll be an opportunity next year.
That's right. We will do this again next year. Thank you. Um, okay, the next item on the agenda is the report from the Ad Hoc Benchmarking Library Services and Cost Committee on Internal Benchmarking and Performance Measurement Data.
Did Jennifer finally say yes, or no?
She did say yes.
Initially, you said, uh, not till next year.
But you didn't hear, you didn't hear the second part of her sentence. She did say yes.
Oh, okay, good.
And we're moving on before she changes her mind. Um, so we're on item three now. Ad Hoc Benchmarking Library Services Committee and Cost Committee on Internal Benchmarking Performance Measurement Data, item three. So this Inga, you are, start this and.
Uh, sure, I can report on behalf of the committee, and then committee members can chime in, um, with anything that I leave out or, um, anything you want to add. So, um, this is the third and final report, um, that the Benchmarking Committee is bringing for, forward to you, and it has to do with our internal metrics and what kinds of statistical statistics we want to gather, but then also what kinds of statistics we think are most appropriate to share with the board. So we're proposing three different reports, um, that you would receive. So one of them is a monthly report, and it's very similar to the monthly report that you've been receiving on statistics. And so we included, as their first attachment, just the regular plain vanilla monthly report that you've been getting. Then, um, attachment two is, uh, the propose, uh, how we propose modifying that report. And, um, basically, we're just suggesting a pretty small change, which is adding wired public computer sessions and wireless minutes. So we already had wired minutes, and we had wireless sessions. So just to sort of balance it out and give you the full picture, we recommend adding those. And then, um, we are interested in including some social media metrics in the future, but.
Inga, would you please identify the packet pages that you're referring to as you go through them?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
15 is the first attachment.
Right, so the first attachment is packet page 15, and this should look very familiar because it is what you've been receiving so far.
And, and if I might just clarify, um, it's kind of a mock-up in the sense that you'll notice it's March data. It's not the data from this month. It, what we were trying to do is, uh, is, um, get a generic, a general format of what we want the data to look like. So it's not, not this month's data, so.
Right, so in fact, um, attachment one on packet page 15 is March data, all on one page, which should look very familiar. But then on packet pages 16 and 17, you're looking at a monthly report mock-up. So what we're suggesting you receive instead, and if you look, uh, about halfway down the page, under public computer and internet usage, you'll see where we've added the, um, data that wasn't in there before, which was, um, wired public computer sessions and wireless minutes. So that's one change. And then the other change, uh, hasn't been included yet, which is we're still looking into what would be the best social media metrics to include. And so I've contacted the City Communications Division to find out from them, um, what they recommend we do to track how well we're doing with social media. And because of, um, some people being off in that department, um, we haven't nailed that piece down yet. But then the other change, um, that you'll see with this monthly report is it's actually two pages. And this is something that we discussed at our last, um, Board of Trustees' meeting, which is because, uh, we're at a point where we're comparing our current month to, um, the previous year's month, we've entered into a period where we're comparing ourselves to what was going on in 2020. We know that 2020 was an aberration, um, not typical at all. And so a suggestion had been made to compare ourselves to 2019. Um, one of our concerns is we don't want to, uh, create a whole bunch of extra steps for our staff and burden our staff with, um, a lot of, um, additional work on top of what they're doing right now because we have such a skeletal group, skeleton crew. So instead of having David totally rewrite the programs that generate these numbers, um, he was able to easily change what year the current year is being compared to. So you see two pages. One of them compares, uh, May of 21 to May of 2020, and that's packet page 16. And then on packet page 17, we're comparing May of 2021 to May of 2019, and 2019 being a more standard year. So, so that's the change that we're proposing to the monthly report. Shall we take?
If I just might add, so this will happen for this anomalous year, and then starting next year or the year after, that will go away, we'll be back to one page. Right, that's the understanding of things, right?
Exactly. Yeah. Trustee Petty.
I see that the headings of the columns are different in that it says 2019 to 20 compared to 20 to 21. And then it says the next on packet page 17, it says 18 to 19 compared to 2021. But starting with the very first line, the numbers are identical. Hundred ninety thousand at the top of the page.
Yeah, if I, if I could interrupt, Bob, think, think of this as a mock-up. Most of these numbers are not accurate, so don't pay attention to the numbers at all. It's just to show what categories of information we're recommending be provided.
So it's really just the column headings that are, are illustrated here.
Exactly, exactly. In fact, you'll find some, some things that make no sense at all, like there's one place that where it shows we have more groups than we have participants, which makes no sense at all. And that's an illustration that this is just a dummy mock-up. So please ignore, ignore the numbers, or it'll drive you nuts.
I mostly wanted to emphasize to you the fact that I was reading every little bit of it. Very good.
So later, we'll be talking about the real statistics, but this is really just about the format and the data that we're going to be collecting.
Right. And then, so that's the change that we're proposing to the monthly report. Shall we just discuss each report, uh, one by one, or should we go through the whole thing and then circle back?
I think one by one would be a good idea myself.
Okay, so what do people think about this change to the monthly report?
I did, I just wanted to add one other thing, and that is that, um, uh, we also, what we don't want is for the city manager's office then to come to Inga and say, oh, we want all these statistics, we want you to collect these other statistics. So the plan is to make sure that we've got everything that anybody needs in here, and so that they're not coming over the transom and hitting David with all these other requests. So my understanding is that, uh, uh, they've talked about this a little bit, but that, uh, as the report says, in October, I think, they're gonna do another thorough review, and they may suggest some other, uh, additional data. But we don't want to be collecting data twice, once for the board and once for the city manager's office. We want to be, and we want them to sign off and say, this is what we're gonna ask for, and we're not gonna bug you for anything.
Right, so what's gonna happen in October is we're switching, um, to the Microsoft suite of products, whereas right now we've been using Google. And, um, Nat has been asking David to provide some statistics that then he's put into a Google product that is very visual and shows nice bar charts and pie charts and that sort of thing. But that work has been, um, duplicative often to the work of gathering data for our access database. So we'd like to, once we've gotten the new Office Product Suite, we want to look at their, um, equivalent of this Google Data Studio and say, okay, we like this, and we don't want to, we'll either use that and migrate the stuff from Access to that, or maybe the Access database will interface really nicely with it, or, um, we'll just stick with Access. But either way, we don't want David having to do double work. Or we don't want the city manager's office to be making reports and statements that are citing statistics that are different than the ones that the library and the library board has.
A quick question.
Sure.
Are the change numbers also mock-up, or are they a formula that you entered in?
So.
Because they look odd.
Yeah.
If they're just mock-up, and you put random numbers there, okay. This is not an Excel spreadsheet with the computation or anything like that.
No, it's actually taken from an Access database, but the headings were actually modified once it was made a PDF printout. And so, um, the numbers you can ignore at this point.
Yeah, the, the thing that, what it is, when I looked at the third entry, the website, the change is actually shown as positive change, it's a, it's a negative change. So I was wondering if there's a formula problem, or, or just, uh, you're putting some random numbers there?
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking about page 17 here. The third item from the top, you see that, page 17?
Mm-hmm. So page 17, that's just a mock-up, that's not the real.
Everything, okay, including the change numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't, I'm not sure we know for sure. Uh, there may be some areas where they are actually accurate computations, but the data that they're based on is not good data. So I would ignore all of it. And, and I'm not worried about whether the numbers add up or not at this point, because we, that wasn't, we, I'm assuming most of the numbers don't add up, but I don't know. Sure, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's almost irrelevant to figure it out, because it's, it's, it's bad data in the first place. Bad data, it's just incomplete data.
Bob had a question?
Uh, go ahead, Jennifer, you go first.
The only question I had, this looks good. Um, and I was really happy to see on the public computer and internet usage, um, recording the sessions and the minutes for both. This is what I did my doctoral dissertation on, the fact that there's no consistency, there are no standards. I am so happy to see we have standards and some consistency. Um, the other question I had was, um, will we be able to pull data from this for the state library reports, so that everything kind of is more in line with one another? I know at Hartnell, when we did our statistics and then had the state library, sometimes there was a discrepancy because of the way the database counted things.
Right, so, so David actually, he does our, our state library report, and he pulls all the data from all the different sources for that. And the Access database is one of the ways he spits out reports, but he uses that for the state survey. So there shouldn't be a difference in the numbers unless how something is defined is different in the state report.
Which they're really good at. Uh, I just wanted to make sure with your skeletal staff that we're not doing a major duplication of effort.
Right, and, and one of the things, of course, we'll talk about the state report in a little bit, but every year, they introduce new fields where they want to know for the past year, you know, how many times did your library director do a handstand? And we're like, hey, we didn't know we were supposed to be counting that, so, you know.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Uh, Bob, thank you. Bob, you had a question?
Yeah, um, I'm glad I waited, because, um, my first understanding was that the city and therefore, uh, each department, including the library, as they collect data, um, what was going, is going to be switching from using a Google product to using Microsoft Access? But that's not true?
No, so, so the library for years has been using Access and, um, using it for, uh, generating information for the state survey and for the monthly reports that you've been receiving. And then, uh, along came Nat, who is a very much a data geek, he will admit to that. And so he started wanting to look at our data and, um, put it into something that was a more visual product. And so he asked David to start providing numbers into a Google, um, sheet, which is their equivalent of Excel. And then, um, Nat programmed it so that it would display in, um, uh, uh, this data suite, right? And so then, uh, Hans and Nat would share that data and they would talk about the library, but it was really, uh, not the same as the information that, that we were looking at. Um, and so we want to consolidate that.
Well, I guess I'm really lost then. Will David and, I mean, will the library and therefore, at the present time, David, be able to continue using Access to, uh, gather and compile the, the data like what we have here?
So, yeah, we'll, we'll do that regardless. And, um, it is a Microsoft product, so we're hoping that when the city migrates to using, uh, the Microsoft suite of products, that their equivalent of the Google Data Suite will interface with Access so that you can then see a bunch of visual things by pulling it from Access.
But so, so what I said is correct. They are, the city is moving from the Google product to the Microsoft product.
Right, that's correct.
Because when I, when I understood it that way, when you first sent this out, I was jumping for joy, because I've used Access for many years. I set up, um, programs and databases and everything for one of the largest nonprofit, um, organizations in Monterey and all, some, some of the bells and whistles that, you know, are, go off from that. And so when I read that the city was gonna start focusing on Access, I thought, hey, well, I thought, "Hey, well, that's great." I had no idea that David was already using Access and was, I guess, recently per Nat having to provide it in such a way that Nat could put it into pretty pictures, you know, pie charts and things like that. And it's been a while, but my recollection is that that could also be done simply using the Microsoft products. And you don't have to export it from a Microsoft database like Access over to something in the Google world, just so you can have graphs and pie charts. So really, this is not going to be a big change for David, because he's been using Access all along. And my general comment would be, we decide, we, the board, with the staff's input, decide what data we want for running the library. And if somebody else says, "Hey, I want to know how many times the librarian does jumping jacks," we'll decide if that's something we want to collect or not. I mean, that's what the Board of Trustees is entrusted with doing or responsible for doing. So, you know, if we think it's a good idea that somebody suggests, "Well, why don't you collect data on blah, blah, blah?" Well, whether that comes up in the near future or a year from now, if it's valuable data, then we would be shirking our responsibility if we didn't start collecting it. But I agree with Marsha that in the beginning, we should be as comprehensive as we possibly can in listing all the pieces of data that we collect in hopes of avoiding any later, you know, changes.
I think, though, that it's very much in the board's interest and in the library's interest to try to synchronize with the state, because we can't...
Oh, with the state, yeah.
We don't want that data that the state is asking us to collect, so we won't collect it. We can't do that. And when the city manager's office needs data to be collected, we can't say, "Well, we refuse to do that because we don't like that data." So the idea, the whole idea of this project was to look at it comprehensively and say, "Let's not be picking a set of data that doesn't match with theirs, but let's be comprehensive about it so that David doesn't have to, after he gives us the data we want, then go give Nat the data he wants, then go give the state the ones." It'll just be one operation. It'll be so streamlined, so.
And in the defense of the city manager's office, the nice thing about Google Data Studio is if you are on the list of folks that can view it, it's a real-time, you know, anywhere you have internet access, kind of a thing. Whereas the Access database that we have lives on a server in the city, and you have to get through a number of firewalls to get to it. So if you're at a meeting and, you know, somebody says, "So how many library cards are there anyway?" you know? Nat was able to, like, hop on Google and quickly go to Google Data Studio and answer those kinds of questions. So that is something that we do want all of our public leaders to be able to access our data easily. And so maybe with the Microsoft Office product, that's the equivalent of Google Data Studio, there'll be a way to do that, to access the numbers that people need whenever it's needed through the internet. We'll see.
So maybe we should move to the annual report and then the state report, and then come, circle back for more questions? Is that okay?
Actually, Marsha, if I could?
Yeah.
Just because it's kind of related to the discussion we've just been having, I just wanted to mention that, you know, as our committee was trying to do a comprehensive review of all of this data and think about who the stakeholders were, we started off attempting to coordinate with Nat in that process, to get his ideas as we went along. And he was starting to do that. And then the finance director and the assistant finance director left the city, and he became the acting finance director. And he just didn't have time to deal with this right, you know, in this last month. So there is some chance, when we get into October or whenever we're looking at the change to the Microsoft products, that he may have some additional or different thoughts that, you know, I think is fair, you know, to discuss and see what we think at that point. So I don't mean to imply through our committee report that he has necessarily bought into what we're recommending. This is our recommendation, and he may or may, hopefully he'll agree with it completely, and we won't have any issues. But there is some chance that there may be some further discussion of that. And it would be timely to do it at the time we're moving to the Microsoft suite of products, if that changes the way we're doing things. So, you know, I think there is a fair chance in the fall there may be a little bit more discussion about some of these things.
Okay. Great. Shall we move to the next report that we're proposing? The next report we're proposing is an annual statistical report that is, looks very similar, at a glance, to the monthly report. So it's also pulled from our Access database. It just has a bunch of additional fields. And so we're looking at packet page 18. So, let's see. Same data elements as the monthly report. So, but then in addition, it will include circulation activity at Monterey Public Library by Monterey Public Library cardholders, which you would expect, but also by Pacific Grove Public Library cardholders, and broken down by jurisdiction where the cardholder lives. So that's one thing. Also, unique cards used annually at MPL by jurisdiction of residence, and by unique cards, for instance, it might be that thousands of items were checked out, and thousands, cards were used thousands of times, but how many cardholders, unique cards, are we actually talking about? So that's what that information would give us. And then the third one, which is one of my favorites, is demographics of registered cardholders by age. So you get a great sense of, are most of our cardholders older, older adults? Or most of our cardholders, twenty-somethings? Or most of our cardholders, elementary school kids? You know, gives a breakdown that way. So that's one thing that the annual statistics report will show. And those, we clumped all at the end. All of the, by residence jurisdiction, were kind of clumped at the end of the report, which is a three-page report. So you will see it, those on packet page 19, starting in 19, and then continuing to packet page 20. But the other changes are rather smaller. It shows a breakdown of group visits to California History Room besides just individual visits, besides just number of participants, excuse me. And then the circulation of the collection, broken down by audience, so adult, teen, and children. And then e-formats, broken down by audio versus text, to get a sense of which of those is more popular. Telephone renewals, so we get a good sense of how well is that service being used. And web services. And then event outreach, which isn't included in the monthly report. And that's how many tabling kinds of events, literacy fairs and that kind of thing, we've been attending. And use of the library meeting rooms, both by groups, number of groups, and number of participants. And collection development, how many items we've added and how many items we've withdrawn. And just as with the monthly report, we wanted to, of course, compare ourselves to last year. But since last year was an aberration, we also wanted to compare the current year to the 2018-19 year as well. So shall we talk through the annual report? Jim?
Marsha, if I could, just one, I think you did a very good job summarizing the differences, INGA. And the one thing I wanted to add was that, you know, we could report all of this data every month, but we thought some of it was really, you know, it would vary from month to month, and it would make more sense annually than monthly. Plus, we didn't want to be bombarding the board with more data than is all that useful. And we thought some of this, to look at just once, you know, once a year instead of every month. But that's obviously, you know, a matter of judgment. You know, any of these things that people thought, really, we should be seeing monthly, we could change. But, you know, we talked about it, and we thought these were things that were worth reporting. And currently, the board doesn't see a lot of this data at all. So we thought just providing it annually would be a good step in the right direction.
Marsha?
Yes.
I agree with Jim that this doesn't need to be presented to the board on a monthly basis. That would just be too much. And when you look from one month to the next, you don't necessarily see trends or how things that take time to develop are actually developing. However, initially, once we get to using the new collection and reporting system, I would like to see it more often in the beginning than once every 12 months, maybe just once every six months. And then, or even every four months, just three times a year. And that way, we can look and see if there are trends developing. And after a year or so of looking at it less often than monthly, but more often than annually, we see, "Well, we don't really need it." Then we will have tested the water and shift to only once a year. But I would like to see it a little more often than annually when we first start using the system and this collection of data points, whether it's every six months or every four months. And it's going to be collected anyhow, so it's mostly a matter of just saying, "Okay, at the end of this fourth month, for example, these are the numbers." And then at the end of the eighth month, and the end of the 12th month. It's not like they have to reinvent the wheel every four months. It's already in there. And I think it would be helpful for us to see movement and trends and so forth over time before we say we're only going to look at it once a year.
So, actually, it might, this year, October will be four months from now. So that might be a good time.
But what we would bring forward to you would just be this printout from the Access database. It wouldn't be, because once we've switched over to the Microsoft Office suite, we'll find out if it makes sense to use the equivalent of the Google Data Suite or not. It might not. In which case, we might not have anything, any new way to display the data to you.
And another thing, too, is we might, if we look at it, say, every four months, we might make the decision that, well, we don't need everything every four months, but these we would like to see every four months, and everything else only once a year. I mean, we would have a chance to experience and determine what really is valuable to us on a little bit more frequent basis than annually.
The only thing I would say about that, I mean, it makes sense, but David is going to have to do some reprogramming to create the report. And it's not as easy as just telling it, "Hide these fields today or not." And so if we're gonna be, it would be easier if we knew what it was we were gonna do, and then we just did that on a regular basis. So it would be easier to give you more than you want, and you can just ignore certain parts of it.
Yeah, I would suggest we revisit this at the point when the city has made their decision and their conversion and can figure this out. And that's probably about four months from now. So I think that we can take it up again at that point. Does that make sense?
Were there other comments?
Yeah, we have one more report to review, so we can take comments on this one and then move on to the state report.
Okay, so the state report is on packet page 24. And with that report, so this is just an excerpt, really, of all the fields that are included in the state report. But we thought that they were really the most useful to provide to the board. We can certainly provide the full report to you as well. However, what we thought was especially useful are the ratios. So for example, we can look at the total operating expenditures of the library per capita, per borrower, per visit, per circulation, and per open hour. So if we know it costs X point X million dollars to operate the library, what does that translate into per hour of operating the library, et cetera? So we thought that was useful. And then also looking at visits, per capita, per borrower, per open hour per week, and per staff FTE, just to see how many visitors do we have compared to how many staff we have. And for circulation, let's see. And then finally, I've lost my place here. Let's see. Circulation, that's right. So circulation per capita, per borrower, per visit. And then due to the change in our staffing model, we also thought it would be really helpful to look at the ratio of full-time staff versus our part-time staff. Because if you remember the benchmarking report where we compared ourselves to a number of other libraries that were very similar to us, we saw that we spent a lot more on salary and benefits than other libraries did. And we're thinking, "Hmm, why is that?" And then we look closer, and we see that their ratio of part-time staff to full-time benefited staff was very different than ours. So they used more part-timers than we did. So we thought it would be interesting to sort of track our use of hourly folks versus full-time folks in the future.
So if I just might add, a lot of the data then, particularly the ones with the little numbering in front of them, are collected anyway for the state. And so we just, you know, the state, the original state library survey spreadsheet had, what, 300 and some fields? So we just excerpted the ones that we thought would be the most useful, rather than having to look at 300 and some fields. And then the ratios are all derived from those. But this is data that will have to be collected to the state anyway, right?
Right. And some of that data that's collected for the state that is really interesting is already included in the other annual report that we recommend. For instance, data about programs. So we didn't think we needed to take that same data and put it into this report, because you'd have that other report that you could look at. So anything that was duplicative, we, most of the things that were duplicative, we thought, "Well, we don't need to be putting it into different reports for you to look at."
Kim?
Yeah, I had two comments and one question. The first comment is, going back to Harisha's earlier question, this is the one chart where this is actual data. So attachment four on page 24, those are real numbers. So this is one where you can actually look at the numbers, and they're accurate. Secondly, this is one where I think it would be good to show not just... Secondly, this is one where I think it would be good to show not just two years of comparison, but three years. And since it's not coming from the Access database, it's coming more from the, from what we prepare for the state report. I don't think that probably would be a problem. In fact, it's an Excel spreadsheet as opposed to being in the Access database. So I don't think there's a programming issue there. And then the third point I wanted to, or the third one was the question, going back to the question about the frequency of reporting this, since this is coming from the annual state report, I'm not sure it would be easy at all to do this every four months or every six months since some of the data is only collected once a year. But that, that's more of a, that's, I'm seeing that as a statement, but it's actually a question. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. So some of the data is collected on an ongoing basis. Things like the circulation and so forth, we can take a snapshot of that at any point to see how many things have circulated in a year. But things like our salary and wage expenditures, that's an annual figure. And some of those other ones, yeah, are annual. So you can't really look at them on a more frequent basis. But if you really wanted to know, for instance, how much have we spent so far this year on salary and wages, that would be, not using this report, but we could, you know, look at our financial reports that we have and drill down to get that data.
Yeah, so just one final comment on that, Marcia, if I could. One of the things we were trying to do in these reports was to try to make them useful, meet the state reporting requirements, make them useful to the board or in other stakeholders, and also be efficient from a staff perspective. And one of the, and we thought about having, you know, multiple, you know, some reports monthly, some every, every three months, some every six months, some once a year. And we thought that's going to become staff-intensive to have too many different cycles of reports. So that's where we came up with the idea of just having the monthly and the annual. Now, of course, we could have a third frequency, whether it's six months or four months. But I guess I would just encourage us to not have too many frequencies of reports just because of the additional staff time and keeping track of it all. It's not a huge deal, but it is a bit of a deal, I think. So I would hope we would have no more than two or three cycles that we're reporting on.
Jim, let me clarify. When I was talking about, instead of just an annual, but also doing a every-four-month one, I did not mean in addition to the monthly ones. I only meant those two. So I would forego the monthly ones and just have a quarterly or every-four-month one besides the annual. I didn't mean to have, like you were just saying, and I agree, you shouldn't have multiple time periods. And behind my suggestion was to eliminate the monthly ones because it's lots of data every single month. And when you just look at it month by month, I don't see the ability as much to see trends as if we looked at it over, say, a four-month period as well as the annual. So just make sure that I didn't misstate what I.
Appreciate that, yeah.
So Bob, you're saying that you want to discontinue the monthly report that we get out of a board meeting that he generates?
I would find it much more valuable to have a quarterly or every-four-month report in addition to, of course, an annual report. So we can look at something over a period of time rather than just every 30 days. And when I saw these, these subject lines, I thought to myself, well, this is for the state library. That means other libraries are submitting the same data. So I was going to ask Inga, is this public information so that we could find a library like the Benchmarking Committee did earlier, Subcommittee did earlier? And say, well, we want to compare ourselves to Monrovia, California's library. We could easily just pull it out of a common database at the state library level. Is that possible?
Correct. And in fact, the state library has just recently created a, what is it called? A dashboard or something like that that you can hop on to and then you can pull, as you said, any one library and compare it to another library. Of course, yeah, saying that, it can be interesting, but I'll just warn you that when we were setting up our comparisons, it took quite a while to identify what were appropriate comparisons to make. And so it had been, originally, it was something that Nat and I were looking at. And he was saying, well, I'm familiar with Pleasanton and I know the folks up there. Why don't we look at, why don't we look at their library? And then I said, well, I know, you know, this library over here, let's compare ourselves to this library. But you find out, you know, one's a county library, one has multiple branches. There are all kinds of factors.
I think all of that would be done for our benefit on an as-needed basis as we came up with reasons for wanting that information. And similarly, I don't think we need all this information on a monthly basis, but over a period of time shorter than every 12 months.
Yeah, well, now that we have our benchmark cities already, it will be easy annually to gather this data for those cities. Now that we have that, we've, you know, that, you're absolutely right. We can, we can do it in a much easier way.
If I could just add to that, though, Marcia, we did find when we were trying to do the comparisons that some of the data that we thought would be the most useful was not included in the state survey data. So we had to do our own survey of those benchmark libraries to get what we thought was more meaningful information. So while you can definitely do some comparisons, if you're going to do a more comprehensive comparison, you're probably going to end up, once again, having to do our own survey. So it's not, you know, you can only do a limited amount with the state survey data because it's not that, not that wonderful. I mean, it's useful, but it's not comprehensive.
And as we discovered, it's not always that accurate.
Yeah, that's right. We found a number of major inaccuracies that we had to ask them to fix before we could move forward. So if you didn't look at it pretty carefully, you wouldn't even have known that it was bad data. So there's that issue, too, with the state data.
So on the issue of whether we want to gather data monthly or quarterly, I have found it useful to have it for the board meetings each month to kind of see what was going on during, during the month. But it'd be interesting to hear, to hear others' thoughts on that. So maybe we.
I do want to comment that I believe that would involve, not that, you know, he can't do programming like this, but right now, it's month by month or year by year. And I think we're proposing that it would be quarter by quarter. And that might involve some programming on David's part to show a quarter as opposed to show a month or a year.
Can I make a suggestion? Since we're not really sure what staffing requirements would be involved in having different cycles, I think I would suggest that we refer this to Inga and the library staff to come back with their recommendations. I mean, I personally would be happy with monthly and annual. But I hear what Bob's saying, and I haven't heard too much about from the other board members. But maybe we could have a little more discussion of what others think would be useful and then just refer it all to Inga to come back with a recommendation once we have a sense of what various board members would like to see. And then she can review that with David and get back with a recommendation. At least, that would be my suggestion.
Sounds good. Jennifer?
I'm okay with the monthly and annual. I keep copies of all of this. So if I really have a burning need, it's, you know, depending on what it is I want to look at, I'm perfectly capable of putting that info into a spreadsheet for myself and figuring it out. I'm concerned with such a small staff and especially getting ready to reopen, we don't know what we're going to be facing. And I hate to think of putting any more tasks on top of the people that we've got. I'm sure they're, like, totally stressed out from the last year and a half, anyway. If we can keep it as simple as possible, at least for right now, because we're dealing with so many unknowns. We don't know what's going to happen when we reopen. We don't know if we're going to be able to stay open or if there's suddenly going to be a big surge. We don't know what's going to happen with what the tool is that we're going to work with. And there's going to be time involved coming up to speed with that, too. And having been the one for heart now who used to have to generate all of this stuff, I don't think people understand how time-consuming it can be to try and grab the chunks of data because they aren't always conveniently stored in the database the way you want them. And you have to go through, like, a series of data pulls and refinements to make it happen. And it's just going to be such a nightmare. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying, could we buy a little time, kind of see where we are in a few months after we reopen and see what tool we're going to end up using? And, you know, reevaluate it at that time, what level of effort, what are our resources? And how do we plan on using that data? And that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I think maybe we should just go with this, revisit it in the fall, focus on the opening. I mean, that's actually the next item on the agenda. And we do have a time certain we have to end by, before they cut the power. So maybe we should, we should just move forward with what we have here and revisit it when the city has a better sense of what they have and the library's open and we have, see what bandwidth David has. Are we, are we okay with that? I don't think we need to vote. It was just a, all right. Do we want to take a public comment on this before we move on?
If anyone would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your Zoom hand. Or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine. There are no public comments at this time, Timmerow.
Okay, thank you. So hearing no objection, I'll move on to the update on the budget and the reopening.
Marcia, if I could, one last thing before we do move on. Our ad hoc Benchmarking Committee has been in existence for a fairly long time now. And even though there are some issues that are up in the air, I think it would be appropriate that we dissolve that committee at this point. And maybe it's just between the board and the director and staff when we revisit this, or maybe we need a new ad hoc committee. But I think our ad hoc committee is dissolved at this point unless anyone disagrees.
Right. I think that was in the report, that this was the last task of the committee. And it's dissolved at this point. Thank you. Okay, Inga, go on.
Okay, so this is an update on the budget and on staffing. And I, I sent out a new org chart before our meeting, shortly before our meeting for folks, if they haven't seen it yet, that sort of gives you a visual of what our staffing will look like when we reopen. And so the news, since we last met, the big news, of course, with the budget is that the budget that the library board proposed was approved by city council. So that's very exciting. That was approved on the 15th. And so now we are, or I am, filling out the paperwork and making the phone calls and sending out the emails and so forth to line up folks for the positions that we have. And mostly, it's for the hourly positions we have. And just about everything has been filled. And, but there's still some additional contacts to make. And the idea is that we're trying to get staff on board for July 1st. We're going to have one librarian position, starting off the new fiscal year. And just a reminder, I'm sort of talking about the beginning of the fiscal year, but in January, we have additional positions that are going to be brought on because of our decision to do this in a phased approach. So anyway, there'll be one full-time librarian, and that's going to be Sarah Nolan. And she's, she moved out of state when she was laid off. And so it's going to take her a little bit of time to move back and get reset up in our area. And so she's going to be returning on 16th of July. And then she's going to need some training for our new RFID system, which that's going to be the next report, I believe. So anyway, we're going to be getting staff back. Most of them not in positions that they held before, unfortunately. But it's great to have people who really know the library available again to work for us in some capacity. So we were waiting for the budget was a big piece of, you know, that needed to be in place before we could determine when we were going to reopen. And what else shall I provide as terms of information for this?
Well, you have an opening date, right?
So the opening date that staff have been looking at is Tuesday, July 20th. And that does seem like quite a ways away, I realize. And I know that customers are asking us daily, when are you going to open? When are you going to open? But here was the thinking. So our RFID gates and other equipment, which we'll talk about in our next report, was going to be installed and tested out and so forth on the 9th of June, but that's been postponed until next week. So it won't be until next week that we're actually learning how to use the full RFID system. And it's going to change some of our procedures and processes. And we're going to need to train staff and figure out bugs, troubleshoot for the bugs. And so we want to give ourselves a little bit of time there. And then also because of bringing back staff and as I described, now one person's coming from out of state, that's going to take a little bit of time. And then we're going to switch from having sidewalk service in the lobby to sidewalk service offered at one of our staff entrances. And in order to do that, we need to have a couple of days when we're dark so we can move everything out of the lobby. So there are two different computers set up in there. But then we also have the bulk of our holds in there on a shelving that is normally for our youth DVDs. So we got to get all that equipment out of there and reposition it in the library and then shift our collections back into place for being open to the public. So we want to take a few days to do that, but we really don't want to cut into time that the public can access the library. So if we start on a Tuesday, since we're going to have a Tuesday through Saturday schedule, that gives some of us Sunday and Monday to get that transition in place. So that's, that's our suggested date.
Inga, which door are you planning to use for the sidewalk service?
It's going to be the staff door on Pacific Street. So it's right off the sidewalk. So we can still.
The one that's right behind where the return box is?
Correct.
And the voting ballot box and those.
Yeah, so we can still call it sidewalk service.
Great, great.
We didn't want to send people around to the side of the building because then there's, then we'd have foot traffic and car traffic, and that seemed problematic.
No, I think this is great, having it, what, 20 feet from the main entrance? Because it continues the same level of convenience that I think a lot of people have come to enjoy, rather than going around the back or something.
Right. And then I think we, we're going to collect data so that the board can then look to see, you know, how much is used and how much everything is used. And so we, because the front desk is being reconfigured. And so we, because the front desk is being reconfigured also, right? And so there may be many changes, and that's the point at which we should. So are you, is there some way to, are we going to start surveying people when it opens? And ask something, collecting? Give it some time and then, and then start to...
Yeah, well, we have, our survey committee is, you know, ready to work on a new survey. So that's something that we can take out.
Something very small, like, you know, a suggestion box or something so that we can get a sense of how people are feeling about it.
So we do have on our website, we have a place for people to make suggestions. And then we do have a suggestion box in the lobby that people will be able to access again. And Jennifer had a comment?
Yeah, when our committee met and we were talking about that, we thought if we were able to get just some suggestions and observations when we first reopen, that that'll give us some ideas of how to go ahead and craft a survey that'll give us useful information to go ahead and more tightly focus what we're doing to meet community needs.
And so...
Jim had a comment.
No, go ahead, Marcia.
No, no, you go, you go.
Okay, I, just to switch gears a little bit. I did have a question about the actual dollars in the, in the approved budget. In the staff report, it indicates there's 1.8 million for the FY 2021-22 library budget. But I know in the library, or in the city's budget document, there's a different figure of, I believe it's 2.15 million. And, and I chatted a little bit with Inga about this earlier. And I thought it might be helpful if she could perhaps give a little overview of the difference in case anybody else sees the two different numbers for the library budget because they are significantly different.
Sure, thank you very much. So as Jim pointed out, in the city's version of our budget, the budget looks much higher. And it's in personnel, actually. And so why is that? And that's because of the way the city is budgeting UAAL, which is the unfunded actuarial, what is it, the unfunded?
Accrued actuarial liability, I believe.
Thank you, thank you very much. And it has to do with, with PERS. And so this is, this year that we're in is the first year that I've ever seen that charged to our budget. And so next year, it was built into our budget. And when I spoke with our outgoing Assistant Finance Director about it, I'm like, wait a minute, you know, I submitted these numbers, but now I'm seeing these bigger numbers. He said, don't worry about that. That's something that the city calculates and we're just charging each of the departments. And so that's why there's that difference. For this current fiscal year that we're in, and we'll see that when we get to the financial report at the end, they have been charging us a UAAL. And yet there was no money put into our budget to cover the UAAL. To date, they've charged us $235,000. And then this, this final month, it'll be about $38,000. And it's not something we budgeted for. And so it's likely to put us over budget. And if it had been completely backed out, we'd actually be under budget from the very small budget that we have. And I pointed that out to the finance folks. And they said, yes, this is happening to all the departments and they're looking into it a little bit more. But that is the, that is the reason why there's a discrepancy in the numbers. And it used to be that all of the UAAL was just put in one big lump in the budget. And this year, they decided let's portion it out to the individual departments.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up.
And, and so my understanding is that in January, there's another set of people that will be able to be hired. So how is that reflected in the budget? So there's another inbox of funds at that point or?
So, so the budget that went before the city council was for the full year. So it was the total for the full year. And you approved that total budget. But when we looked at it, when it was being proposed, we saw that there was one amount for the first six months and then a slightly larger amount for the next six months as we were phasing in positions. When you look at the position control list that was in the city's budget, they showed what our staffing should look like in June of 2022, once we've brought in everybody. So for instance, it shows two full-time librarians. Whereas we're starting out in July with one full-time librarian and the rest are all part-time. And then in January, we're adding a local history librarian full-time. So that will give us two librarians. So I suppose you could also say the numbers in the position control list are the numbers that we'll see in February, for instance, once people have been brought back.
I see. So the position control reflects January, but the budget itself is kind of backloaded. So there's more money in the second half and less money in the first half, but it all adds up.
Right.
Any, any comments or questions about the opening or? Well, I had one question. So we should publicize, we should publicize the opening. Are you planning to do any sort of special anything or just quietly open the doors on the?
What a great question. So, so this is the first public announcement of a date. And then there have been questions about how are we going to publicize it? And so clearly in our website, on our website, in the e-blast that we send out on our social media, we can do that. And then Mary Jane and I had talked about, did we want to do a special kind of preview for those folks who have been particularly generous in helping sustain us along the way? And we just realized that any kind of event planning takes staff time when we don't have staff. And so we haven't ruled out having a preview or even something nice on opening day. But at this point, I think we're erring towards just sort of opening, having a soft opening and seeing how it goes. Because what we don't know is how people are going to respond and what sorts of, what sorts of just things arise that we realize, whoops, you know, this isn't going to work doing it this way and so forth. So there'll be adjustments and so forth. So it's probably going to be a little bumpy at the beginning.
Yeah, so maybe just a quiet opening and then a couple of weeks later, some sort of celebration or something.
Right, right.
It doesn't take any staff time to plan. Any other, any other comments or questions? So you, you think that the, everything will be ready to open in the, assuming that the RFID gates are up and everything? I think you'll be ready by then.
That's, that's what we're, we're going to try. We're sure that there'll be things that we haven't thought of or things that we haven't been able to accomplish. But for instance, today, we're finally able to get our self-checks compatible with RFID, we think. I'll know more after this meeting. But yeah, and then also we've had painters in. This is the second or third day we've had a couple of workers from the city who are doing some touch-up painting on the interior in the public areas just to freshen up the building. So that's nice. And we have some carpet repair that needs to be done. We've got a work order in for that.
Bob, you had a question or a comment? Unmute.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we need some kind of celebration of reopening. I think trying to do it on, was it July 20th? Is that the Tuesday you're talking about? Would be risky. And we don't know, there might be some glitches in the reopening process. I think as Marcia was alluding to, maybe we wait a little while and then have a celebration of it. I would say, you know, celebrate a month of being reopened, giving the painters and the carpet layers and all those people that Inga just said are going to be fixing up here and there, a chance to do that. And I would like to suggest that it be an event sort of co-presented by the library staff, the library board, and with a big input from the friends of the library. So that it shows that the main group, the friends of the library, is here promoting it as well. And, you know, I don't want to turn it into a big fundraising or anything. But if the friends were there and they were promoting it and we figured out some way for all those three entities to be involved, you know, might have longer-term benefits.
Well, that reminded me of another point that I should call out, which is we're going to be reopening with a much leaner staff than we've had in the past when we've been open. And we couldn't do that without the volunteers that we have that are helping. We have volunteers that come in every day that pull the holds that people have requested off the shelves. They're putting things back on the shelves. We had a huge group of volunteers who helped us with our encoding. And so we've had this really strong and loyal group of volunteers who have really gone above and beyond. And at some point, we need to recognize them because we could not have provided the service that we provided without them. And, and I know that they, they don't want gifts and they don't want food and they obviously don't want money. They're volunteering. But it would be great if we could do a very special recognition for those volunteers.
That would be, yeah, that, I think that would be great. And maybe, maybe even just a certificate or a letter.
Exactly, yeah.
From the board or from you or, you know, I'm not sure. But each one should get some sort of letter. And, and, you know, maybe a reception for all of them together at some point, but...
How about a wall of fame acknowledging each volunteer by name on it somewhere?
Yeah, that might be nice. Take their pictures and put it up on the wall if they want that.
Yeah, instead of handing out a certificate or a thank you note, put them all up there and leave it there for a while.
Yeah, that's a nice idea. Of course, somebody has to do it, but... And maybe one of the volunteers to do it, right?
I'm not sure about it being in a public area, though, because, you know, people might not want their name and photo.
Doesn't have to be a photo, but, or it could be a photo of them doing something that's already in the public venue, like putting a book back on the shelf. Or already there in front of anybody that happens to be walking by. And it wouldn't have to identify them as, you know, George Johnson putting the book up. It just could be a picture of a volunteer. So I understand the privacy question. So I think that could be easily avoided, any issues.
Yeah. Maybe the, the chair and the vice chair could talk about this and try to figure out some good way of recognition and let us all know. But I think it's really important that they do be recognized. Inga, you know, maybe, maybe it's best coming from you. I don't, I don't, I don't know. But you're absolutely right because we couldn't have survived this year without them.
Yeah, I think they would appreciate that the board recognizes the work that they've been doing.
So I'll be happy to write a, draft a note and get it together.
Okay.
In fact, maybe if you guys all empower the current chair and the next chair to get together and draft a little thank you note to all the, we can do something else later, but just to do that before that, you know, in the next week or so before they open. Will that work? Will that, is that okay with everybody?
Great, thank you.
Jim, Jim and I will get together and do that.
So do we need public comments on budget and staffing?
Let's do that. Any public comments on the update and reopening?
To make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. Or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. There are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the next item is an update from the ad hoc RFID committee and an authorization of letter commendation to David.
Okay, so we'll start with the update. And Harish and I met last week and went over this. But there's always seems to be late breaking news. And as I mentioned just a few moments ago, the, earlier, earlier this afternoon, David was finally on the phone with the folks who we get our self-checks from. And they're finally activating the RFID feature in our self-checks. So I hope that that was all successful and we're going to be able to start using those self-checks with RFID very shortly. And then the other news, which Harish is familiar with, is that next week on Monday, we're taking delivery on the RFID gates and the RFID smart bin. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, the installer will be here to activate, set up and activate the gates and the smart bin. And then the patron app, which is going to enable people to use their smartphones to check things out themselves. It has been set up, but we don't have access to it yet. So that will, we'll get access to it next week and be able to test it out. And then finally, the wand, the wand that we received it and we tried to figure out how to make it work. But of course, we need to wait for the installer to do a few more things to it so that we can make it work. So all of that is going to be happening Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of next week. So it's very exciting. And we will find out, you know, after that, what things still need to be resolved. But then we can actually start testing things out and seeing how it's going to affect our workflows and, and have some new procedures and that sort of thing. Meanwhile, we've been able to set up encoding so that we can start encoding the materials that come over from Pacific Grove. So we're going to tag and encode those materials so that from the customer's perspective, it's as seamless as possible that anything that they have on hold or anything they find in the library, they can just use the self-check machines or they can use their phone or they can go to the desk and easily check things out. So that's, that's where we are at this point. Yes.
Just a quick question. So the Pacific Grove material will be able to be read. You're tagging them as they come in. So they'll be able to be read either by our system or the old system?
Correct, yeah. And then eventually, we're hoping that Pacific Grove will be able to install RFID themselves. And eventually, as we creep forward towards this project, this goal of combining our catalog with other libraries in the area, since others have already installed RFID, will be compatible with others as well.
Harish, did you want to add anything to that? You're muted.
No, I'm really glad that this is finally seeing the light of the day.
The delays are unfortunate, but I think that's expected for every project, every project I've been on. It always takes longer than you'd planned for. But this is good. And I think the July 20th opening date, moving it out, does make sense in light of this because we don't know what kind of stacks we might have. So, you know, when we try to load a whole bunch of books, you want to make sure that they all get checked out, that somebody doesn't put a log going out and get embarrassed. So it's a good thing.
Other comments? I, I, also, are you sure that this date's not going to slip? So far, you're on track for this date, right?
Yes, yes, we think it's good. Another thing I should mention or I can mention is that the gates are going to be able to track numbers of people coming in and numbers of people going out and on an hourly basis at the two different public entrances. So that's going to be a level of detail that we haven't had before. And I'll be able to see it on a dashboard on my computer and, and some of the other folks in the building will have it on their computer as well. So that's going to be another level of, of data that we'll have. And so that will help us with looking at how busy we are at different times and helping us deploy staff in the most effective ways. Oh, we'll be able to see statistics about circulation too. So we can then be able to say, oh, Tuesday mornings are very busy. Wednesdays between four and six are very slow and make decisions that way based on that data.
Yeah, Jim, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think I've already got the answer, but I'll ask it anyway since you've given me the opportunity. It sounds like while there, there always can be surprises and problems along the way, it sounds like you're fairly optimistic, Inga, that this will be ready by July 19th. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement that I'm fairly optimistic and I'm balanced by David Kuhn, who always anticipates something's going to go wrong. So it's probably a good team to have both of those extremes.
And to follow up with that, I would just say, maybe you should wait until Monday to put the date out. Show up on Monday, right? Well, this is already Thursday, so maybe we should just wait until Monday. And when they walk in the door, then we'll know that it's going to, at least, at least they're showing up and they're putting the show up.
We could also wait until Thursday, so that's a week from today, to see how well the installation went. Because if they say, oh, you know what, you ordered the wrong kind of gate.
Well, it's an interesting question. If, if this whole thing falls through, you don't want to open, right? So you might be right to wait until next Thursday to publicize it.
And that is July 1st, so.
Okay, so let's, let's say that the media starts on July 1st.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, so that's part one of the RFID report. But part two.
I have a question, so before.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to point out that you're talking about opening on Tuesday, July 20th. Two days later, Thursday, July 22nd, is our board meeting. Is there anything, any good reason to think about coordinating those two events? Because the fourth Thursday of July is two days later, the 22nd.
But I'm not sure why, why would, I mean, we'll have feedback on how it went at the next meeting, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, if I could add to that, Bob, one of the reasons that Inga was focused on a Tuesday was because they're closed on Sunday and Monday, which allows time to rearrange everything. So if we were opening on a Thursday, that wouldn't work as well.
Inga.
Right, so part two of this report is a draft letter of commendation for recognizing David Kuhn for his work on RFID. Marcia, did you want to say more about that?
I just think that he has done an incredible job, you know, figuring out how to implement this, making sure people are trained, managing all the volunteers. I think he went way beyond, you know, his, his, his regular job in order to make this happen. I mean, he, he thought of all these solutions and fixes and ways to make things. It was just a masterpiece of creativity to see how he got this done. And I thought we ought to thank him for it because he did, he did deliver and on time or early and got it all done.
It took a lot of coordination and we had the volunteers working on it and also paid staff. And, you know, everybody felt informed and knew, knew what to do when they came.
And manage it all in a pandemic when you couldn't have people working near each other in the stacks. You have people starting on the left side and on the right side and not coming into the middle. It was just very open.
Yeah, and I kept envisioning we would do one floor, have people up there, and then we would do the second floor. But he was able to keep teams fairly close together, but spaced out appropriately so that sections were done in chunks.
And Bob?
The subject line in our agenda packet says that we are to authorize a letter of commendation. And so I would like to move that we authorize the letter included in our agenda packet. And that's probably the easiest decision I've ever had on this board. So I will move that we authorize the letter of commendation to David that was included in our packet today.
I'd like to enthusiastically second the motion, but also we need a public comment probably before we vote.
You should always have a public comment on a motion, so.
If for anyone who would like to make a comment, please raise your Zoom hand. Or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. There are no public comments.
Okay, okay, so now we vote.
Trusty Felgoth.
You're muted, Trusty Felgoth. We can't hear you. Muted.
Yeah, hold on.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Trusty Joshi.
Yes.
Trusty Petty.
Sorry, I muted myself. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson.
Yes.
And Chair Maro.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The financial report.
Okay, so I wanted to point out in the financial report on packet page 30 that in the general fund, we have reached 93.2% of expenditure for the year. And if we were spending everything evenly throughout the 12 months, we should be at 91%. So we're a little ahead of ourselves and potentially even going to exceed our budget. And then just to remind you that the reason that's happened is there was $237,000 so far that's been charged to us that we hadn't anticipated. And that's that unfunded actuarial liability.
And so the city, you understand that?
Right, and they thanked us for reading our budget carefully and noting that and said the other departments have been charged as well and they're looking into it a little further. So they thanked us for bringing that up. And that's all I had to say in terms of comments about the financials. But if there are questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any comments or questions on either page 30 or 31? Thank you. And then the next item is the statistical report.
Okay, so unlike previous statistical reports in this packet, these are the real numbers. But I didn't have anything in particular that I wanted to point out to you. So I'm happy to take questions, take questions, yes.
I just note the large number of volunteer hours. That's a pretty big number and a large number of volunteers.
Yeah. I'm curious about the May 21, the items checkout and self-checkout. I thought the library was closed. I see the number 11 self-checkouts. I'm just curious about that.
Right, so the volunteers who help out in the library and then some of the staff have used the self-check machines, so that has kept them going during the time that we're closed.
So they check out their own books as long as they're. And they're, that's a perk that I think we should give them, right? So I think that the other one that's interesting is under reference, after reference questions answered, other questions answered. The 2000, is that, when are you opening 2000 times?
Probably most of those are, yeah, questions about opening or if we're not open, what other libraries are open, who has computers, who's doing programs, that sort of thing. So lots of avid library users excited to have libraries reopening.
And do you, do you have a date? And this isn't quite relevant to this report, but do you have a date for when the bookmobile will be actually on the road?
So the exciting news about the bookmobile is that we are going to be able to use our former bookmobile driver. She's going to be an hourly employee, but still she's going to be able to be our bookmobile driver. So because of that, we're planning to put the bookmobile back on the road the same week that we open the library.
Ah, wonderful. When the announcement about the library opens, it should be the bookmobile.
And with the grant that we received from some very generous donors for summer reading, we're actually going to be able to do a program. It's going to be, we think it's going to be a summer reading samba party at Montecito Park, which is one of the bookmobile stops. And so we're, we're putting plans together for that as well. And it will be, of course, in compliance with the California Department of Public Health rules and so forth. But we just want to make sure that the, the folks in neighborhoods like that understand that the bookmobile is back. And so by having a little celebration through, by having a children's program, we think we'll be able to get the word out about that.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Great, great. It's very good. Any other comments on the statistical report? So I, we don't need, do we need public comments for those reports? Yes?
I think we need them for all of our reports.
Have that by now, but, oh, well.
To make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand or dial star nine if connected by phone. There are no comments at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Inga, did you say that Joanne is going to be driving the bookmobile?
No, actually, our, our full-time bookmobile driver had been Orchidia Olvera. Right, and Joanne retired. But she is going to be available as a backup, when we need a backup. But the exciting news is that Orchidia is going to be able to be our bookmobile driver.
Right, okay, that's what I understood from the flow chart. And I misunderstood what you said about Joanne being back on staff.
Yeah.
So now we move on to trusty comments. We'll start with Trusty Felgoth.
Well, I'm looking forward to meeting in person with the board in the near future. And I look forward to working with Jim as our new chair. And I want to thank Marcia for helping me gain my sea legs since I've been appointed to the board. I also wanted to report that I downloaded the audiobook of Cast and have read that. Very thought-provoking. And I'm really glad that MPL is doing programming for adults, especially now. I think we all really need something like that. And this is certainly a timely topic and a fresh perspective on how to view this. For me, it just was a whole different way of looking at the situation. So look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Trusty Joshi.
I want to express my thanks for, to all the staff and all the volunteers who kept us going through this last year. It's been a difficult year and would have been possible without them. So thank you.
Trusty Petty.
I would, I would like to second what Jennifer was referring to and restate something that I think I say almost every single month, which is if you look at the statistical report, you'll see that as expected, while the number of adult programs is lower year over year, the drop in the attendance is nowhere near equal to the drop in the number of programs. And I think that speaks a lot for how valuable the new methodology for presenting adult programs and how successful that has been and how important it is to continue that. No matter how successfully we actually reopen the building and the community room and everything, I think that is a key to meeting the needs of many, many seniors who, for transportation reasons or evening scheduling or whatever reason, might not have been taking advantage of our program. So kudos to everything connected to that. And, you know, I think everybody on this board does a fantastic job, but I just want to personally give a big positive shout out to the work done in the benchmarking reports that we have seen recently. I think that data has given us a vision, not a vision in the sense of vision and mission and all that junk, but a look at a frame of reference from which we can make a lot of important decisions. So I, I have found that to be a very helpful report for our use, not just so far, but I imagine ongoing. And that's why I'm glad we can, when we were talking earlier about the new data format and being able to tap into what the state is collecting from us and all the other libraries and almost like continuing the work of that subcommittee. So very good. And of course, looking forward to about a month from now.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Well, I'd like to echo the kudos that my fellow board members have been giving all around and particularly to Inga and the staff. This is, this is the end of the fiscal year and we're getting ready to reopen. So it's kind of a momentous period, I think. And so I particularly wanted to thank them and the volunteers. But a particular shout out to our outgoing Chair Marcia. This past year has been so difficult in so many ways. And I think the library and the board could have gone off the deep end a number of times. And she was very stable and calm and kept us all going in the right direction. She also, in addition to all the work of the chair, she was active on two major subcommittees. The Planning Committee, which I think has done a huge amount of work with Bob. And I know with, with me on the Benchmarking Committee, we had, I think we've had something like 20 meetings this year. So anyway, I just think she's done a great job and I'm really indebted to her and appreciate all the work she's done. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can use my comments to thank the. Thank you, and um, I can use my comments to thank the incoming uh, Chair and Vice Chair in advance for the work that they will do. Um, I also wanted to, you know, looking at the adult programs and some of the things like the CAST uh, uh, work and the, the Wednesday meditation, I wanted, I know that Francesca is behind this, who maybe is very modest about it, but she's done a lot of this work. And in fact, uh, some of the Wednesday meditations, when the teachers can't show up, she leaves them herself. And some of those are the best ones, so I wanted to thank her for that. But I also wanted to take a minute and kind of reflect back on all the work that you guys, I mean, all of us have done over this year. I was just thinking about it. So we uh, first of all forged a really close working relationship with the Friends and Foundation, the new organization. We developed a strategic plan, uh, which was a bit overdue and that includes um, uh, equity and social justice, which I think is really great for these times. Um, we have a, we forged a really good working relationship, I think, with the city manager and the Assistant City Manager's Office. And they have actually expressed appreciation publicly for the partnership with the board. And they've talked about how much they appreciate what the board is doing. And then in all the committees, we moved forward RFID, that's been kind of on the back burner for years and years and years. And then finally, we got it going. Uh, the benchmarking, the non-resident fee report, the reopening plan, all the data gathering. And, and we got through the pandemics with the curbside. And I think all of us deserve a real big uh, pat on the back. We have to pat ourselves on the back because we can't pat each other on the back. But this, uh, so it, it's really been, I think, a remarkable year. So uh, I think we're, we're a good team and uh, we move things forward. And I'm looking forward to more of the same, more progress. And um, I, I think the city is the one who decides whether boards and commissions meet in public. That was my understanding, so I guess we wait to hear what they have to say about public meetings and whether we can, we should, or, or whatever, but uh.
It, it would be good to know um, if, how many, how many trustees would prefer meeting in public rather than a hybrid? So maybe people could chime in about that.
What do you mean by a hybrid?
A hybrid would mean that uh, we would still have Zoom. And so um, people could either Zoom in as uh, trustees or uh, be in the same room together. And then also the public can watch via Zoom or attend in person.
Well, we saw a model of that at the last city council meeting. And to me, it didn't go so good, but uh, I, I think they'll get the bugs out of it in the future.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, my, my sense of it is if it can work smoothly and, and efficiently, then I think the hybrid is fine. But my concern is that it will be neither smooth nor efficient, take a lot of staff time and be rather uh, confusing to everyone involved. Uh, but I'm particularly concerned about the staff time. So if it's gonna take a lot of staff time, then I would recommend we stay with the um, the virtual meetings until we're ready to switch to the public meetings, but that's just my two cents. I, I, but I'm mainly concerned about the staff time.
I think continuing with the meetings like we had today makes it more available to more people across the board because they don't have to come somewhere in person. And so I think uh, potentially keeping it this way uh, is more efficient and more available to more people. And, and I've suggested to another organization where the meetings for a long time have been uh, Zoom meetings like this in lieu of in-person meetings. And I suggested to them that for those people that wanted to have an in-person meeting, make the in-person meeting a quarterly meeting and all the rest of them be held this way because of how efficient this is and it's uh, no travel, anybody can tune in. And, but to satisfy the desires of those that want to be uh, you know, seated in person, do that one quarterly.
Yeah, I'm part of another organization that's grappling with this right now. And we've done some experimentation with hybrid meetings and it's like the seventh circle of hell. It's really difficult, really, really difficult. Requires equipment, it requires training, it requires staff. And I don't know that you get that much bang for your buck. I have to agree that the Zoom format really opens it up to folks who maybe are not interested in fighting traffic and trying to find a parking spot and coming in. It, it just opens it up, makes it so much more accessible in one way. And another way, maybe not so much for folks who don't have uh, fast internet or computer gear. Uh, but for the most part, it, it just seems like, until we have some clearer guidelines, I could live with maybe meeting quarterly in person. Uh, I'm a little concerned because we don't know what's gonna happen. We've just reopened, not even a week. I tracked the COVID numbers, they're going up, um, not as fast as they did. And I'm one who has some health conditions, so I'm a little concerned, even though I'm vaccinated, being in a room with potentially people who aren't, you have no way of knowing. And, you know, there's always a risk there. So I don't know, I think we'll know more in another couple weeks. Um, and maybe the city will come down with some kind of guidelines too. But in the absence of continuing with Zoom and having to choose between one or the other, it'd be nice if maybe continuing with Zoom and then doing the quarterly in-person meetings or maybe twice a year. I don't know. My two cents.
So uh, Jim, you may be the second chair to be presiding over all online meetings.
What about Harish?
Well, Zoom meetings are convenient, particularly in wintertime because it gets dark so soon and it's nicer to be at home. Uh, when the weather is nice, it feels kind of constant to be sitting inside when it could be, you know, it could be outside. But of course, the library is not, not the best place either that way because we've got a small room that's all dark. So it, it's kind of a difficult decision to say this versus that. If you had a, a more open area where you could meet, that would be nice.
And I, I think that the sa- the safety and health considerations are really the, the, have to be the primary driver. So maybe we do stay online.
Yeah, if, could I, could I add to that, Marcia? I, 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 I know the um, the city's HR department was um, querying staff as well as commissioners about whether they've been fully vaccinated or, or are about to be. And I, I don't know what exactly that information will be used for or how it will be communicated, if at all. Um, but, but that could be relevant. Um, in other words, if, if all of us are fully vaccinated and if all the staff are fully vaccinated, that's one thing. If we don't know or if some aren't, that, in my mind, that's a different thing. Um, so I.
But you also have the public who are gonna come to the meetings and we don't know.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, although we normally don't get that many public, but, but you're right. You, you don't know. Um, the other comment on, on this is that, you know, we, we may not have much choice. I mean, a lot of it has to do with the uh, what the governor does with his emergency declarations and any changes that are made to the Brown Act and things like that, that I believe those issues are being discussed in Sacramento. And God only knows where Sacramento is gonna end up on issues. So we may be just subject to the whims of uh, the legislature or the governor, but uh, we'll see.
So I'll chime in on what Jim said about the information that um, HR has been gathering. So uh, according to Cal O'Shaughnessy, um, in the workplace, if uh, somebody has been vaccinated, employee or uh, commissioner or trustee has, or volunteer has been vaccinated, then wearing a mask is optional. If a person has declined to respond to the question or has responded saying that they haven't been vaccinated or haven't been fully vaccinated, they are required to wear a mask. So um, the, the respondents who have responded that they've been vaccinated, that list was provided to me and then I'm um, I need to look and see during the course of the day um, if somebody's not wearing a mask, are they on the list that I received of people who have confirmed that they've been vaccinated? And then we were also reminded that if we, as workers, we see a coworker who's not wearing a ma- or who is wearing a mask, we're uh, not supposed to ask them, oh, I see you're wearing a mask, does that mean you haven't been vaccinated? Um, or I thought you were vaccinated, why are you wearing a mask? Because that can start to lead to um, there are issues around um, privacy for uh, health information. And then there are also, we don't want people bullied one way or the other or harassed in some way for choices that they've made. So anyway, so that's, that's how that information is being used at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if there are no other comments. We are adjourned.